Good evening. It is Monday, February 24th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, wastewater treatment plant presentation with select board member, Mr. Al Hamilton. Welcome, Al.
Is that better? Yeah, I think that's, that's working. Yeah. All right. So yeah, I'm gonna ask Colleen to just pull up the slideshow and go up to the, yeah, there we go. So, a small group has been working informally to date on evaluating the possibility of building a wastewater treatment plant, principally for serving Route 9. As I said, the journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step. So, next slide. This is really about our tax burden. I think it's no surprise to anybody that our, our tax burden has been shifting away from commercial and industrial properties onto residential. So, you know, we're currently at about eighty-three point seven, headed towards eighty-four, unfortunately. It's likely to get worse before it gets better. We need about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of commercial and industrial development to bring this back to sort of our historic eighty-twenty level. And the Route 9 corridor is the only area in town that can accommodate this. And I'm talking about the Route 9 corridor writ large now. So, next slide, please. I did a quick analysis of the Route 9 corridor. Well, it wasn't actually quick. I went through every property along Route 9. And by my, and this does not, by the way, include the EMC or Park Central properties. By my assessment, there are a hundred and sixty-seven acres of land that front onto Route 9 that are undeveloped or underdeveloped. Pardon? It does not include DCR land. These are privately held parcels of land. Now, some of them, you know, fall outside, that is, they front. But they don't necessarily all currently are in the commercial or industrial zoning, but they have frontage on Route 9. When you look at the undeveloped and underdeveloped land along there, they're assessed at about two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars per acre. Now, that figure is a tad low because there's one quite large parcel that is tax exempt in there. That's owned by the Chinese Gospel Church. If you look at the more modern buildings along Route 9, they're assessed at about one-point-two million dollars an acre. Again, these are rough numbers, but they're pretty clear. If all hundred-and-sixty-seven acres were developed to modern standards, we would actually achieve that hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar gap, moving our, our tax burden back to the eighty-twenty. I'm not gonna suggest that that's gonna be something that's easy to do, but that would, that is sort of what's on the table. It would generate about two-point-three million dollars in additional tax revenue. Aggressive development of the Route 9 and the EMC parcels is really the only way that we can halt or reverse this tax shift. This is really sort of the, the focus. Next slide, please. We have some barriers, you know. Our zoning, as I think everybody knows, is obsolete and needs to be, be changed. The town does not have a particularly positive reputation to be business friendly. I've met with a number of developers over the last month and a half who have, you know, told me explicitly, you know, deals that simply did not happen because of, of a variety of things. And lack of wastewater treatment is a big drawback to actually commercial and industrial development. You know, we have parcels along Route 9 that have very limited perking capacity. There are acres of asphalt that needed to cover septic systems. And if you start in Boston and you travel out Route 9, the first community you'll run into that does not have a municipal wastewater treatment system is Southborough. Now, you get back on Route 9 and keep heading west. How far west do you think you have to go? The answer is... What? Goshen, yes. The town of Goshen, or Goschen, population nine-hundred-and-twenty-six, which is, you can see on the map there, that's where it is. Every other community between us and Goschen is, has a municipal wastewater system. We simply, for a variety of historical reasons, don't have one. And I think it has cost us business and has caused a portion of the tax shift. There are some important reasons why some types of businesses simply do not work well with septic systems. Restaurants, grocery stores, biotech, some manufacturing. So, for example, I met with one of the developers and who told me that, you know, a restaurant on a square footage basis requires about eight times as much septic capacity as an office building. You know, so now we get some, some idea about why, you know, our restaurant choices in town, fine as they are, are limited. I met with another developer who said, you know, there are major companies that simply will not consider locating in a place that has septic. They want to have access to a municipal or a wastewater treatment system. So, next slide, please. So, yes, we can make our town more attractive to business. We can make some currently undevelopable or limited development parcels more developable. You know, we, there are parcels in town where there are, have septic challenges that would not necessarily have septic challenges and would be ideally suited for some form of commercial or industrial properties. It's also an opportunity to reduce the impermeable surfaces, you know, the stages after everybody to deal with stormwater. And impermeable surfaces are certainly a, a major contributor to stormwater problems. Wastewater systems actually increase property values regardless of whether the property is connected or not. And this was confirmed to us by a couple of the developers we have spoken to. These are people who are saying, you know, yeah, if you put one in, you're gonna get to tax me some more. I like the sound, I don't like the sound of that generally, but, you know, we have an awful, we have, as a member of the Select Board, we have an eight, a five-pound bag of, of capacity and eight pounds worth of wishes that wanna go into that bag. And so, you know, we're, we're struggling to figure out how to fund government. We can also use treated wastewater in the place, as a substitute for places where, that are using drinking water. And irrigation is the most obvious candidate. You know, it would be possible, for example, to irrigate the golf course with gray water, making this, you know, a green solution. And it provides better monitoring and controlling of, of what's going into the environment. Because, you know, wastewater treatment plants, every day, you're, you're monitoring and testing what's going out into the environment. That's simply not true with, even with a mini plant. Next slide, please. So, we've been poking at this for a while now. There've been three wastewater studies that have been done in the last year and a half. They've identified some design options. They've identified some short and medium-term wastewater volumes. We think that, you know, initially, in the Route 9 corridor, we're talking about something on the order of half a million gallons a day, potentially rising into the neighborhood of a million gallons a day. And as I say, there's been a small group that's sort of been looking at this somewhat systematically. Next slide, please. We met with the Framingham DPW, because the obvious thing is, can't we just connect to the MWRA and make, make it, call it a day? The answer, unfortunately, is no. Framingham was very willing to work with us. You know, they had excellent meeting with them. I even talked about, you know, some potential things we could do together. But the MWRA is capacity limited. They, they have plenty of capacity. What they don't have is peak capacity because a number of the systems between here and Boston Harbor are combined sewer and stormwater. And so, when it rains, they, they reach capacity. We spoke to Westboro about the possibility of connecting into the Westboro system. Their system is currently at capacity. One of the challenges in attaching to an existing system, particularly those that have what's called ground discharge, or I'm sorry, a surface discharge, which means you're essentially taking the effluent and running it out into a body of water, is that getting, expanding those permits is extremely difficult. They're, they're, those permits are issued federally and they're rare as hen's teeth at this point. So, Westboro is at capacity and, you know, they're actually searching for solutions as well. There may be an opportunity to work with the Westboro, Hopkinton, Shrewsbury system in essentially building another plant that we could connect to. That plant might be in Southborough. But so, you know, we're continuing to engage with them, but, you know, again, this is something that we're, we are poking at. We're very, very early in this process. Next slide, please. We had a long discussion with Weston and Sampson, one of the authors of the study. They confirmed that it's gonna be difficult to get surface discharge permits. Ground discharge, which is essentially a fancy version of, a very fancy version of a septic system, is going to be the most practical. The soil conditions, like any other system, are gonna be determinative. There are places in town that appear to have appropriate soils. You know, one of the, we could use some of the effluent for irrigation. One of the big things that they reinforced with us is that wastewater systems have substantial economies of scale, which would make entering into a regional relationship better because it would be bigger and, you know, the unit costs would be significantly lower. A wastewater system can be designed to expand incrementally as demand increases. We met with the Mass DEP, and they again confirmed the ground discharge is going to be the most practical disposal. And they, they're, they were very positive and willing to help. Sort of the, the big milestone is something called a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is going to identify specifics, what, where, and when. In particular, you know, where are you gonna locate a plant? We think a plant requires somewhere between ten and fifteen acres. Where you're going to have a discharge area, again, discharge areas, something in the neighborhood of, of, of ten to fifteen acres. The, the figure of merit, again, this is, this is Kentucky windage, is about sixty thousand gallons per day, per acre. Next slide, please. We met with Violia. Violia runs the Westboro wastewater treatment plant. Most wastewater treatment plants are not actually run by municipalities. They're run by, they're run under contract by companies that specialize in this. It's a very specialized business. Requires, you know, licensing, licensed operators. There's a lot of chemistry and a lot of systems work. They do have one very interesting idea, which from a municipal finance perspective is quite attractive, which is to operate a wastewater treatment plant as a regulated utility, meaning that it is a private enterprise. And this is quite common in the Middle Atlantic states, New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey. It is not common in New England. It's some newfangled idea, and we don't like those newfangled ideas. So, it would be regulated essentially the same way that an electrical utility or a gas utility is regulated. There'd be, a public utilities commission would, would engage in rate setting. The attractive perspective from town finance is that it's privately funded. We don't have to go out and build something. We don't have to go out and borrow money. It, it, it probably does require public-private cooperation because there may be land-taking involved. So, you know, this is something we're gonna continue to look at as a potential option. Next slide, please. We've met with a, a number of the Route 9 stakeholders. I've met with four of them so far. The reception's been quite positive. You know, wastewater services can promote denser development, and it improves late land values, even without, you know, if you have an existing building with an existing tenant base, then that tenant base is really gonna be the determinant, from a tax perspective, of value. But if you've got undeveloped land, the, the presence of a municipal wastewater system does in fact add value to that land and may help also in repurposing some parcels. So, next slide, please. So, what are the big issues? Well, obviously, where to locate a plant, where to locate a disposal plant, and then the business model. You know, are we going to do this as a town? It is much simpler, from a regulatory perspective, to do this just within the, the meats and bounds of, of the town of Southborough. But it may also be the more expensive one. A regional solution could be less expensive and more robust, but it, there are actually regulatory challenges that have to be dealt with. We have to ask ourselves, you know, are there other areas that would benefit from wastewater services? And in particular, the schools. One of the, one of those consultants we talked with suggested that a portion of our discharge could be run through the existing school's discharge systems. Schools have a very, very periodic flow, and that we might be able to actually take advantage of some of the down periods when there is low flow in the school discharge systems to actually route wastewater through those systems. So, engaging with the schools is gonna be important. The downtown area remains an issue. We know there are septic issues there. And there are also some areas along Route 9 that are residential, in particular, the Fayetteville area, where the soils are not particularly great and they are septically challenged. So, there, there may be a few other discrete areas. But the primary driver here is that we're trying to make an environment which will attract commercial and industrial partners to come to town so that we can begin to ease the tax burden on residents. Obviously, a big question is, how are we gonna pay for this? And, you know, we're gonna poke at that some more. Next slide, please. So, the next step is we're gonna continue outreach to the stakeholders. So far, we've been doing this informally. The time has come to form a committee. And we're actually going to, there's a charge that's sitting before the Select Board tomorrow night to form a committee. You know, we're about to have to go and look for money, and that, and now we need to, we need to become more formal. We've gotta discuss this with the schools. We've gotta understand a little more about what comprehensive plan requirements are and look for funding sources. We're gonna begin to poke at doing a one-stop application for the funding for the, for a comprehensive plan. Got a deadline of the middle of, of March to actually submit a, an expression of interest. And we're going to continue to have discussions with Westboro and Marlboro to see if there are areas of, of cooperation. Again, we, we don't know. I think that's, I, I wouldn't bet the bank on it, but we're, we're going to, you know, if we can do it, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think that's about it. Oh, near-term goals, I'm sorry. We would like to begin a comprehensive plan late '25, which means we gotta figure out how to pay for it probably in, in the fall. It is a, it is an activity that is bigger than a breadbasket. It's, it's analogous to what is being done currently for the nearest school. It's no, not that expensive. But, you know, you, you gotta spend money to figure out what you're doing before you try and actually do something. So, and that's my presentation. Got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. That was very interesting. How far away can the treatment site be physically?
The treatment site and the disposal site do not have to be co-located. They can be quite, quite ways apart. So, to give you an idea, you know, I mean, Framingham's treatment site is in Boston Harbor. So, if you, you can pump untreated raw sewage quite a distance if you process, if you pre-process it.
Okay.
And you can pump it through rel, surprisingly, small pipes.
So, they, I mean, for our purposes, if we were looking at the options of within the bounds of Southborough, it could be anywhere in town?
Pretty much. I, I, I think so, yes. You know, the, the ideal place, or at least why it's one of the places that we're looking at, is the, is to put the plant between the lanes of 495. If you look at 490, and again, this is incredibly early. We haven't actually talked to the DOT about this yet. But, so, this is just, you know, an idea. We've talked about it, is if you look at 495 north of Route 9, 495 divides, it actually goes around a hill, Mount Nebo, and there is actually enough space in that area to put a wastewater treatment plant. The nice thing about putting it there is the neighbors aren't going to complain. So, that would be an ideal spot. Now, whether the DOT will play ball, we, we don't know yet. We're now working on a plan to approach them. Because, but, so, you know, this is, but the answer is, is that a treatment plant could probably be just about anywhere in town. Obviously, you're, we're not gonna be putting it in a residential neighborhood. And so, we're gonna have to find a place, and there are a few other sites.
So, Aola, Aoli, am I saying that right?
Violia.
Aolia, thank you. Is a, that's a private enterprise, right?
Right, right.
And so, they would be, they would have hypothetically a contract with the town?
So, there, there's two different models. The, the group we met with is, specializes in operating wastewater treatment plants. So, they operate the Westboro plant. We took, I took a tour of it. It's fascinating if you, you know, it is truly fascinating. Sewage comes in on one end, and thirty-six hours later, theoretically, drinking, drinkable water leaves on the other end, and it's all a biological process. It's actually, you know, if you're a nerd, it's kind of cool. It, it's impressive. And so, and their job is to manage that plant. And this is a very specialized business. The other model is that they could actually come in, or a company like them, obviously, you're gonna go out to bid, is a private company could come in and, with the right set of contracts, actually build their own plant and provide that service to town. And obviously, you know, you've got, we, we had one conversation with Violia about this, and it, you know, so there's a lot more work to be done if this is the model that we were to go to. But yes, you know, it is done in, in the rest of the country, far more commonly than it. It's also, by the way, true that a lot, there are a lot of private water systems, where, you know, there are companies that specialize in operating both water systems and wastewater systems.
So, so the vendor, Violia or otherwise, is paying a fee to the town?
We haven't gotten anywhere near close to that yet.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know what the business relationship is. All I know is, is that this is something we want to explore.
And, well, Violia is collecting fees from the participants?
Oh, yes, yes. They would be, they would, you know, just like N-Star. In fact, the interesting...
So, we don't know, we, sorry, but we don't know if there's a revenue stream yet back to the town?
Actually, it's a, you know, we tax N-Star.
Oh, other than the property tax on the site itself, but, as far as like the operation of the system may or may not be a revenue stream?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So, the, so, new businesses coming in, like hypothetically, this thing gets built, and now it's ready for customers.
Right.
So, then a biotech comes in, or a restaurant, some big thing comes in, and it's now paying Violia. The question I have, and they're tied in, I guess the question is, existing businesses, existing residential use properties on Route 9, what, how does that work? They, they remain on their own septics and then tie in as gradually as they're phasing? How's that go?
The, the answer is that we don't know the, the details of that yet. As again, you know, we've been poking at this for three months. There certainly are options. Options can include a Betterman assessment because they're, as a way to pay particularly for commercial and industrial users. There, in other communities, businesses have been required over a period of time to connect. And, you know, at that point, the Betterman assessment gets lifted and, you know, they get a, they get a sewage bill. I, I lived in Reading before I was here, and, you know, my wastewater bill was about three times my water bill because we were paying for the facility in the harbor.
So, I just got a couple more questions.
Yep.
So, hundred-and-fifty million of development is needed. Is that like, what does that number represent? The cost of development?
It's a assessed value. So, you know, all I did is a pretty simple calculation. I looked at the assessed value, residential versus commercial and industrial, and how it shifted. And I said, well, how much more commercial and industrial assessed value would we need to get back to the eighty-twenty? And that's about a hundred-and-fifty million.
Okay. And so, in order to get that, the idea is looking at the under, quote unquote, I guess I was looking for the definition of underdeveloped?
Oh, sure. Again, this is Al's definition of underdeveloped, you know. And like you, I drive up and, I've been driving up and down Route 9 for the last twenty-nine years. And so, you know, I, I'll give you an example. The old Andrea Restaurant, which has been empty since I moved into town, I can, I, I labeled that as an underdeveloped parcel.
Well, that's pretty...
Yeah, it, it is developed. I mean, there's a building on it.
Well, wait a second. I was...
It's permitted for a new development to go in there.
Well, right, but, right, but...
That aside, though, I, I think what, what Mr. Hamilton's doing is saying, well, this is like an obvious example. I'm looking for maybe, I mean, we don't have a Route 9 full of that. So, I'm wondering, can you, can you go like a little further into like what?
Yeah, there, there are some...
What's, what's right on the margins of being underdeveloped, other than the obvious site such as that?
Well, there's the one next to the Andrea Restaurant, so there, there's that, that one. Yeah, pardon? I did not include most of the single-family residences, for example.
You didn't?
But, no, as, as underdeveloped. I left, actually, there, there's... I left, actually, there, there's a separate category.
Okay.
So-
You're talking about sites that are truly just not being utilized?
Yeah, utilized or being, you know, yes, I'd say they have buildings on them that, you know, if you looked at it, you'd say, you know, somebody's going to develop that someday soon. Or I hope somebody's going to develop that someday.
That was-
Again, this is, this is my, my assessment. It's, you know, it is, I wouldn't call it entirely scientific, but I wouldn't call it wrong either. Anybody, if you drive up and down Route 9, you, you'll see, Bill, I, I'm not going to point out other property owners who are paying taxes in this town, but you, you would, you would see places that are clearly candidates for development.
Yeah, 167 acres, that's quite a lot of-
Yeah, I, I was actually surprised. Now, but not all of that, you know, so for example, the, the large parcel loan by the Chinese Gospel Church, not all of that is currently zoned commercial or industrial. So, you know, I, I did it strictly on the parcel basis. And I, by the way, I also tried to the best of my knowledge to not include parcels that I know are completely wet. There are a few of those.
So not to monopolize this, I just have one more. And that's, you mentioned the current zoning is obsolete and over-constraining. Which, what are we talking about? What specifically is-
This is our, our current commercial and industrial zoning.
In what, by what? Can you be a little bit more specific?
Sure. You know, we've been meeting, for example, as a working group to look at the industrial parcels because, you know, you know, they're obviously, you know, we have, we have terms in there, you know, for where, you know, you can keep your night watchman. Now, I don't know about you, but the last time, I, I've never actually worked in a, for a company that had a night watchman versus, let alone, you know, an on-presence, onsite residence for the night watchman. You know, our, our definitions of allowable use or by right use, I think are extremely constraining. I think our, in the industrial size, our, our minimum square, maximum square footage by right is extremely constraining. And again, I've now, you know, I've been talking to a, a number of the developers along Route 9, and I had one developer who, you know, just told me flat out about three or four big deals that, you know, came to him and just walked away because of, of our zoning ordinances. And, you know, there are places that, you know, there, I'll back up. If you look at a typical Home Depot, or a Target, or any of the big box stores, for example, they all run right around 100,000 square feet. And, you know, we can argue about whether that's the type of development we want, but, you know, a, a good-sized grocery store is close to 100,000 square feet. And, you know, I think we need to be rethinking this. I know that there is a group that's working on a Route 9 corridor study. And so, you know, our, our zoning ordinances are 40 years old. I think we are, we, correct me wrong, our zoning ordinance-
Well, so they've continually been updated. So saying the whole, the whole code is 40 years old is just false.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. But, so that, those are examples of things, I think, are allowable uses. As you know, we got into a great kerfluffle about the gym that wanted to stay in town. You know, it's time to update-
So the gym, the gym I have to jump in on.
Okay.
Because that was misinformation. That was a residential lot, and they were giving, given a use variance to put an office building there. So the only way to cure that is to allow commercial uses on residential properties. And I don't think we want to go there.
All right. This is not a, this is not a, a swamp I want to wade into, to be perfectly honest.
No, I just, I just, I just like the facts. So just, you know, get the facts out there and not, that was just total misinformation.
All right.
And, I mean, there's no use to have zoning if you're going to allow, you know, commercial uses and residential properties. The whole reason for zoning is to separate non-compatible uses.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Sorry, that drives me nuts.
Hey, I, I'm generally in favor of this, but I, when these things come out in public meetings, I do want to question and find out.
Absolutely, you know, we-
But I appreciate the effort.
We've taken the first step, and there's a whole bunch more that has to happen before, you know, we can put a shovel in the ground.
Ms. Houlihan?
Or pump our first gallon.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Hamilton, for your presentation. So it's interesting. I, Jesse had a bunch of the questions that I had as well, and I recognize that we have a lot on our plate tonight. My only question was specific to trends. And, you know, I know you have in your head the big, big box theory, but if you've looked at or read any real estate trends or seen what's happened, big box stores aren't really existing anymore. We're moving to omnichannel, we're moving to type of digital resourcing. Land use would be used differently for storage of cloud capacity and server capacity, less big box realtors, I mean, real estate. So trends are really different post-COVID, and we're seeing. And so a lot of the questions that I would just have, I wouldn't ask you to answer them today, but just to think about, is trying to find and repurpose for those, that $150 million worth of assessed value, is what kind of businesses would we need to lure in to town? And, you know, wastewater plant makes a lot of sense, but I, I don't want to also put false pretense around what will, what can be done and what could be done in the future, knowing that we've, are in a very different environment than we were even 10 years ago. It's my only comment.
I, I, I agree with you completely. You know, I don't think we're going to see a lot of office parks being developed in the next five to 10 years. I could be wrong, but I don't think so. But, you know, there are amenities that I think the town could benefit from that do have high wastewater treatment requirements, things like a grocery store. You know, I'd like to see a Whole Foods or a Wegmans in town, or, or. And they, those types of facilities do have substantial wastewater requirements. Restaurants have substantial wastewater requirements. Certain types of biotech and manufacturing have wastewater requirements. It's, it's simply, this is, you know, when I met with one of the developers who said, you know, there are places, types of businesses that simply will not even consider locating in your town if you don't, if you can't offer them municipal wastewater services.
Mr. Maria?
Hi, Al, thank you for your presentation. Obviously, you've done a lot of work. It's really well thought out. I'm, I guess my question was around, in terms of trying to pay for this, thinking about running it like a utility, have you instead thought about a split tax rate?
I have strong feelings on that subject.
I know.
Yes. And, you know, I'm sure that, I'm sure that I'm-
And other towns have it. You mentioned along Route 9, we're the only town, like many of the cities and towns around us have a split tax rate. Is it because of something like this? Or, I mean, have you explored like deferred costs?
If we build a wastewater treatment plant, the users are ultimately going to pay for the operation and long-term, the capital costs of those. It was not a tax, it's, it's a, it's no different really than the water bill or a gas bill. You know, it's, it's driven by the function of, it's typically driven by how many gallons of water you use. So, yeah, you know, this is a service. You know, you're also, by the way, making it less expensive to build some of these facilities. Building a, a mini-plant can be quite expensive, and operating a mini-plant can be quite expensive. And so we are saving businesses monies there, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for, in, in some cases, particularly if it's a restaurant, which, you know, you have to have grease traps that are cleaned on a regular basis. And then the whole system pumped and serviced on a regular basis. So in the long run, and again, you know, in the long run, we're all dead, that the users will be paying for this cost of operating this rather than, so we're not really talking about a split tax, but we are talking about, you know, users paying a usage fee for the service, no different than water or gas.
Thanks, thank you.
Ms. Barshio?
Thank you, thank you, Al, for the presentation. It was very thought-provoking. I do have a couple of questions. Some have already been kind of touched on, so, and some are just comments to carry forward, hopefully, that however the committee is populated, that, you know, they may come and watch at least this portion of the meeting, just to get an idea of some of the thoughts that Planning Board had. I know Marty touched on the big box stores. And I know in some of the research that I've done, well, it would be great to have something like that. They look at, there's so many things that go into it as far as demographics and the size of the town, and the size of, the amount of businesses in the town, and, you know, as they look towards foot traffic. So I, I kind of think that if, if I work in Westboro, am I going to come to Southboro to go to a grocery store? Maybe it might depend on the store. You know, and the same thing for Framingham. I, I don't know how Southboro kind of got sandwiched in the middle of these two big towns, which is, I think, which makes Southboro so attractive. But at the same time, I think it, it poses some challenges as well. I have a lot of questions on the cost, on how many businesses are interested, and we have any idea, and again, this is too early, to talk about, more about betterment fees. You know, I think there's a lot of concern about what this is going to cost the actual taxpayer when, I know we need to have something done, but when you're looking at the cost of a school, and I think you would put a, a post on my Southboro as well about the cost of infrastructure in this town as well, with the roads and everything else. I think there's, there's a big global picture we have to, to look at here as we go forward. And I agree, this is one of them, for sure. This is definitely one of them. I just question on your parcels, 167 acres. And again, you may not know this off the top of your head. I just wondered how many were undeveloped in, or acreage-wise? If you have any idea, was it 80/20? And how many were underdeveloped? And if you don't have the answer, that's fine.
Actually, I, I do.
Okay, great.
Because I, I actually flagged them differently. Right off the top of my head, I'd say it was about 80/20.
80/20 undeveloped?
80% were undeveloped.
Undeveloped.
20% were under. That's a ballpark.
Okay. And I'm, again, I'm not asking for concrete numbers, I'm just, as I look at this globally now, I mean, I, I didn't realize that there were that many acres. So obviously, I-
I was surprised, too.
-interested in that. I'm interested in that. So thank you for taking the time, you know, to do that. So the exploring municipal wastewater, so when we talk about municipal wastewater, and again, this is just ignorance on my part, because I don't know the answer to this. So towns that are tied into MWRA, I know MWRA has no additional capacity for us. So when, when I look at Framingham or Westboro, I know they're tied to MWRA, but do they also have a municipal wastewater treatment plant?
So Westboro is not tied into MWRA.
I thought they were through-
No, they have their own system.
They do, okay.
They have a system that is shared between Westboro, Shrewsbury, and Hopkinton. Hopkinton, it's not all of Hopkinton, it's just a, a portion of Hopkinton. And I, I think they, they are permitted, I, I think that the number is 7 million gallons a day.
Okay. Because I know at one point, we had talked about water, you know, for Hopkinton. There was, there was talk about if there was the ability to tap into some of the wastewater. So again, you're educating me, which is a good thing here today, and hopefully, people that are watching may have some of the same questions I have. So, okay, so there's a plant that covers that. And so I guess that makes that question obsolete. And I don't know if you know the answer to this, and I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't. So when, when wastewater kind of went in, and you've got, I know you've got Hopkinton, Westboro, and Shrewsbury sharing a plant.
Yep.
Southboro just somehow missed out between Framingham and, again-
Uh, you know, it was, we didn't miss out. We made a decision. Now, I, I've actually come across plans from 1970 to connect to what was then the MDC.
Okay.
And I haven't, I'm going to have to find somebody who's lived in town a long time, maybe. Yeah, I'll ask Don, or maybe-
Jack.
Or Jack. There was, we did have an opportunity. And, you know, quite honestly, had we done that, Southboro would look different. I'm not saying better or worse, but it would definitely look different. You know, it would be much easier to develop Route 9. Just to give you an, an idea, I looked at the tax structure in Westboro. And in Westboro, it's 70/30. And, you know, they've got, you know, like it or not, you know, there, there are things you can say about Route 9 on Westboro, but it is more densely packed with, and, and more valuable than the comparable strip of, of, our strip of, of Route 9. And, you know, both in terms of businesses and retail.
Okay. Well, thank you. And again, these are just some questions, I think, as you look forward to potentially the fall and a comprehensive plan and everything, I think these are some of the questions the public is going to have. I mean-
Oh, yeah.
You know, I've had a lot of people say that to me. How, how did we get where we're at when everybody around us has it and we don't?
I'm, I'm meeting tomorrow at 11:00 to discuss a 15-year capital plan and, which includes all of the wish lists that we might want to borrow money for, and then figuring out, and I guarantee you, it will, it will exceed the five-pound bag that we have-
Yeah.
-or debt capacity.
I'm sure.
But, you know, then we have to make choices.
Okay, thank you. And Jack, do you want to? You got to come to the mic, though, sorry. I'm sorry.
I do know about that.
I know, but I just, I just wanted to, again, we talked about why and how, and Jack's lived in town a long time, so.
I have. It was actually, you're talking about the Robert Charles Plan.
I believe so. It's the 1970 plan.
1970. It was done in 1970 by Robert Charles out of East Boston. They did a study, and we were hooked to the MWRA, we were hit to MDC in Framingham. And it was one of the first town meetings I went to. We voted it down because we were afraid that the town was going to grow to 10,000 people. Surprised. And it's, it's really, and that's the only, we were just afraid of the future. And the Board of Health brought it back several times, and it got turned down, and finally, they gave up. They said, they're not going to do it. But that's exactly what happened, so.
I just have, everyone else asked most of the questions. Do you have a list of that 167 acres?
I've got a spreadsheet with my scribbles on it. I'd be happy to sit down-
Can you share it?
Sure. Yeah.
Because I'd be, I'd be interested. Because I went parcel by parcel down the zoning map, and I, there's a lot of DCR.
No, there's no DCR in that. But it, but the parcels often extend beyond the current zoning districts. So, you know, we have parcels that are split, partially commercial and partially residential. I just did it on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, sir.
Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. As the board knows, I've been a consulting engineer for over 30 years, design and manage road and bridge and bike path and development projects, done lots of utility relocations. I'm very familiar with sewers and sewer pump stations, the wastewater treatment plants. It looks like Mr. Hamilton's done a great job. It's a great presentation and a lot of research, you know, into the particular issues that need to be, need to be dug into. The Route 9 corridor wastewater feasibility assessment that Weston Sampson did July 2023 is very complete. I would suggest that all members of the board read it. You'll get a real good idea, because they, they lay out everything in terms of where the soils might be, you know, that you're going to need groundwater. Grounded or discharge permits are no small thing, okay? You're taking everything that's in the wastewater treatment, and you're putting it into the ground. You need the offset to groundwater, and you need ace soils, sand. The other thing is, I'd suggest that the committee or whatever work with Weston Sampson to put together a draft scope of work and a ballpark estimate for the comprehensive plan. You're going to need a detailed description as well as a number to go to the selectmen, to go to town meeting, to get the money for this study. So it's very short money to have Weston Sampson do that now, so you know what you're talking about. The other part of the study thing, it looks clear that we need the zoning, we need the planning, we need the long-term plan. What do we want Route 9 to look like, okay? Even separate from what developers might want Route 9 to look like. The other suggestion I'd make is, you might want to consider having Bill Cuniff on the ad hoc committee, because Bill, the DPW superintendent, is going to be the guy that will follow this all the way through to the end, to construction. So it's very important that you get his input as you're going on. The other thing, think quickly, just some things that come up in the discussion. Northboro's been doing development. All they're doing is warehouse and distribution. When I did land development work, 140 Franklin National Development thought they were going to do a nice office park. That ended up being all warehouse and development. So I think we really need to be realistic about, about what kind of uses we might expect and what kind of values and what kind of money. what kind of values and what kind of money. The other thing in terms of what's being built is Marlboro is building apartments. I drove on French Street. They got three apartment buildings back there. They're doing the old horse farm on Route 20. They're doing the building right across from Main Street. Marlboro's doing everything right for apartments and for housing. I really hope that maybe if we're going to do something like this, that it would be for that reason, you know, converting offices to housing, to apartments, or encouraging developer to build apartments. That would be, for me, a good use of a wastewater treatment plant, and I think more realistic. The other thing, Southboro is a critical location for transportation. There are hardly any other towns that are located so well, and that's why the warehouse and distribution is going in, because we got Route 9, we got the Mass Pike, we got 495, okay? Southboro is strategic, and that's one of the reasons why I moved to this town. I'm a transportation engineer, and I could see wherever I had to work, I could get there from Southboro. The other thing is on Forest Main, your gravity, your gravity system has to go to the treatment plant, so the treatment plant can't be anywhere. It has to be where you can get things by gravity. Otherwise, you need to pump. And we're talking, you can pump effluent to a wastewater discharge point, but when you're pumping, you got to pay for the pump station. You got to maintain the pump station. So, and I guess wastewater treatment plants cost a lot of money, and infrastructure for them costs a lot of money. We're a small town. I question where we would get the money and where we would get the payback. And I'll leave it at that.
Just to assure you, Mr. Cuniff has been involved from day one.
Great.
And, you know, we would be lost without him. We'd be lost without him.
Oh, no, he's great, yeah. And he's got a new town engineer, so she can help, too.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Karina?
No, we don't have any. We have six attendees, no hands raised. Oh, I did. It was related to really minutia costs. I was thinking about, you know, the payoff, the return on investment, similar to what Paul was just talking about, but that's really down.
As the town chiefs get, you can be assured that we're going to have to figure out how to pay for it. And if we can't figure out how to pay for it, we can't do it. It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Al. Very interesting. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Master Plan Implementation Committee Quarterly Update. Ms. DiMaria.
Okay. I'm going to ask Karina if, a couple things, if I have other members. I have Mr. Stivers here, one of my members, and just to see if I've got Will Warren and Judith Watson. She may have...
Judith was just here a minute ago.
I know she had a meeting to go to at 7:00, so I could just call the meeting to order, call the meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
We have Tim Lit, Dennis Charbonneau.
No, Will Warren would be my other member.
Claire and Alan Belkne.
Okay. All right. I'll just ask if we can bring up the slides. I wanted to share with the planning board, this is our, we're no longer doing quarterly updates, we're doing biannual, and those are hard enough. Mr. Stivers, do you want to come up to the table? You can add.
That's okay. I'll stay here.
Okay, you can add any commentary you'd like. All right. You know, I think in the past, I haven't mentioned our members, so, you know, just proud to say Mr. Stivers is on the committee, as well as Judith Watson, our clerk, and Will Warren. The committee has worked really hard, I'd say, over the last half year and year to really understand more of the dynamics and try to quantify how the goals are progressing. So this year, for this update, we are kind of happy to show you some of those, you know, charts and wanted to get your input and then have a little bit of dialogue at the end. So Karina, or Colleen, sorry, if you can go to the next slide. The first thing we wanted to do is take a look at, you know, which, so this is a chart of all of our, you know, major categories, land, along the bottom, land use and zoning, housing, economic development, open space, natural resources, if you can read it. And we clumped together sort of which, the progress that the goals and recommendations have, you know, have made for each of the committees, and which ones are in progress, on track, or complete, and really kind of tried to focus this year on which ones had not started or were delayed. And then in the following slides, I'll show you, we kind of split it out a little bit more. So what you can notice here is that, you know, there's a lot of blue, and that is not surprising to the implementation committee, because we know that a lot is happening in town. I also gave you guys a copy of the annual, Master Plan Implementation Annual Report that's going to be published, I think, for town meeting. It displays some of the, all the, you know, the various work that's getting done by boards and committees. When we, when I look at this, you know, we tried to take a look and say, well, what is, you know, where, where is there maybe some more progress to be made? You know, which group or which area is, you know, maybe a little bit more delayed or not quite started? So looking kind of 50% at that line, we have most goals and recommendations are, you know, in progress, on track, or complete. The real winners, I think, are, you know, schools and recreation by far. So that's kind of one way to look at it. We wanted to break it down a little bit more, so just if you can go to the next slide. Okay. So earlier on, I'd say about over a year ago, Mr. Stivers came up with sort of the green light, red light, you know, yellow light. And we've been working, I'd say, over the last year to try to make that work and, you know, use that kind of as a dashboard. And we tried various different ones. And so here we have, you know, each chapter on the left side, and so you can just quickly look at it, and you can see, if you're looking for red, those are goals that haven't started. You know, so along the other end of the spectrum, you're looking at green or the light green, those are complete, you know, or on track. So I would say there's many, many goals and recommendations that are in progress. But we wanted to also take a look at which ones haven't, I mean, by far, most goals and recommendations are in progress, actually. We wanted to take a look at which ones haven't changed in a while, and why we chose 2023, I think that's because it's a couple years out from the finalization of the master plan. And by, I think by definition in the master plan, those were the short-term goals that should be accomplished. And so we've moved into, I think, the medium-range goals now. So looking back at, we said, okay, are there some goals and recommendations that are maybe a little bit stalled? And so we started to track which ones have, you know, maybe started, but then, you know, they got out of the gate, but then they stalled. And actually, there's quite a lot of those. Just to keep in mind, this is a very iterative chart. It's actually live-linked now to our tracker that Judith has prepared for us. And so this is as of the end of 2024, and, you know, we're fallible, so sometimes there's mistakes. So it's like not exact, right? We're using a bit of an interesting method right now, like we call it crowdsourcing. Mr. Stivers goes to a lot of meetings. If he's going to a meeting that somebody's not at, he can enter in data, you know, what's happening at that meeting. Judith is doing a lot of looking at meeting minutes, and I'm also, you know, and Mr. Warren are also, you know, kind of keeping up with this, so anybody can enter information. And so that was a change that we made in this last year, because it became really overwhelming with the amount that was going on. And to be honest, we've talked as a committee about how can we even capture the essence of what's going on, because there's so much going on. And we've talked about how do we socialize this? I think it's important for people who move into town, or even people who've lived here a long time, to know that there's, you know, this is a very dynamic master plan. It was, you know, thoughtfully put together and with a lot of input. And, you know, we almost want to advertise all this stuff that's happening, and that maybe is the next thing we might focus on, you know, in the next months. And so if you just can go to the next slide, that's, it's the same thing, it's the 2024 progress, but it's a percent, it's just a different way to look at it. So you can, you know, each, each one is 100%, say. So for example, you know, you can look at schools at the very bottom, you know, half of it's green and half of it's yellow-orange, so they are in progress, you know, half in progress and, you know, or ongoing, ongoing, complete. So that's sort of where we're at right now. We're focused a little on these short-term goals, which boards and committees might need a little bit of help getting going, getting started. We've talked to this board before about how do we, you know, how can, you know, what more can the Master Plan Implementation Committee do? We're tracking it, but is there anything else, you know, that can be done? You know, what does this board think in terms of that? If you go to the next, well, let me just take a look at this one. It's pretty, before we go to the next slide, it's pretty obvious that natural resources and resiliency have a lot of red. So, oops, I lost my slide. In the past, we've come to you, we've asked if we could simply reassign some of the responsibilities. We did that with, when the Public Works Planning Board was dissolved, and we've done that when we had a new TPW chief come on. And, you know, the way that the committee looks at it is, if there's a, if there's a goal that's not being met, how can we just move it along? So it's kind of very objective. So in looking at this, we see resiliency and sustainability, there's some opportunity there. So this, this chart that you're seeing, if you can go to the next slide, Colleen, this is natural resources and land use. And you can see current responsibility is select board. Frankly, select board has a lot of responsibility for goals and recommendations. And so it was kind of, you know, a very easy decision to say, well, you know, let's see what the planning board thinks if we were to move these responsibilities over to planning board. One of them, I think, came up last time. I think it was establish the Sustainability Committee or, no, it was the Five-Year Climate Action Plan. And actually, Lisa had asked that we go back and speak to Melissa, the conservation agent, about that. And that did, and that did occur, actually. But so in this case, the recommendation from Master Plan Implementation is to move the responsibility from select board over to planning board. And so wanted to, you know, get your thoughts and opinions on that. And just one other thing is that Judith and I had a chance to meet with Mimi first week in January to also discuss some of the areas that, you know, could use a little push, I guess. This is one of them. And another was EDC. And so Mimi agreed that she would get more involved in working with our EDC coordinator, who I believe has already resigned, right? So maybe we'll have to, you know, come up with a different plan there, because if you notice on the chart, you know, EDC goals are starting to fall behind. But, so tonight I wanted to focus on this. I also wanted to just solicit any thoughts from the board, if, you know, there's certain other areas that you think that we should become more involved in, how, you know, every year we know the select board gets together and they put priorities together, and they look for our input into, you know, what we think may be a priority, could help them. Maybe, maybe Mr. Stivers would bring that over to your goal-setting meeting. But, you know, I think it's a really important opportunity for this planning board to be able to weigh in, and that is an opportunity that we really haven't taken advantage of. So if there's any thoughts, anytime, to be honest, because I think we missed our goal-setting committee, meeting already, Sam, right? You did goal-setting early, January? So are you all done through June, or will you do it again in the summer?
Summer next.
Summer next, okay. So, yeah, we've missed that opportunity. And, you know, it's a, Sam has offered, you know, several times, it's not to say it's going to, you know, it goes, you know, it's democracy, right? So it goes to the select board. But if there is, for example, something that's not moving along, or something that we think is maybe more of a priority, and of course, it could be anything, housing, transportation, wastewater treatment, it could be any of that. So tonight, I'd like to first get your, you know, thoughts and agreement on these goals and recommendations, moving over to planning board, and see what your thoughts are about that.
Mr. Stein.
Well, my thanks to the committee. Great job. I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Holahan.
Thanks, Deb, for presenting on behalf of the committee. Again, I think it's really quite impressive, particularly on recreation and schools, but obviously some zoning and some other areas that are working well on your kind of complete versus non-complete. Your specific question asking about the sustainability piece, I think it would be ideal to put it in with a committee that can get it done. And I guess, I know Mimi is stretched really thin, and I know we have a lot on our plate, so maybe it's a question back, is like, you know, how do we impact sustainability, given the purview of what the planning board does in this town? We don't necessarily have a lot of sustainability, or, you know, we're seeing a lot of state laws, whether that changes federally or whatever happens. I won't get into politics, but whether sustainability matters and how we actually incorporate that into the way that we govern our town and incorporate those types of decisions into things that builders, contractors have to use into their construction of their buildings, or how we put in new zoning and what we want as part of a future base. So like sustainability, I think, goes to the grassroots of things, and I just, and maybe it's a question back to Mimi, too, is like, how involved can we get to be able to support this versus just in a kind of tertiary role where we assign committees and oversee something? But, you know, what is the impact that we can actually have?
Ms. Broschel.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you for all of this and all the work you do. I know I was on the MPIC for a while, and there's a lot going on, and there's a lot that you guys have to do and track, so thank you for that. As far as changing of these responsibilities, I agree with some of what Marnie said, but I worry, I look at some of these things, and with global warming and everything else that's coming at us, and storms getting bigger and whatnot, I think this is a bigger discussion than just tonight. I really want to take some time and think about this on a much higher level than I did, I'll be honest with you. I gave it a little bit of thought, but in looking at it and actually hearing the presentation from you, it's kind of put it in a new perspective for me. So I'm not against doing some of these, but I think there might be other options as well. So again, thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you and the committee have done.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that, and it is, it is a big topic. So I, you know, appreciate that you've come back. We can have another discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Debbie, and to the whole MPIC committee. Really appreciate it. It's so nice to have worked on the master plan and then not have it stuffed on a shelf, never to be seen or heard from again. So this is just fabulous, and I really appreciate all the hard work. I agree with Ms. Broschel. I would like to have a better understanding of what that means and have a more in-depth conversation on that at a later date. I'd like to understand what responsibilities that would be for the board and how to accomplish those goals. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Stivers, do you want to give us some words of encouragement and say anything? Come on up.
Take a bow, Mr. Stivers.
Sam Stivers, member of the Select Board and Master Plan Implementation Committee. I think, for me, the big takeaway here is that things have been happening. The Master Plan Implementation Committee has actually not done any of this stuff. We've been tracking. And I think the structure of the 2021 master plan process is the reason that we're making progress. I participated in the 2008 master plan, which was done by consultants, put on the shelf, and maybe some things happened, but nobody actually knows what happened from that one. The 2021 plan actually had a committee that was made up by people who were on these various town boards and committees, who knew what the committees wanted. who knew what the committees wanted to do and felt was important. Those inputs were, produced the 211 or whatever it was, implementation steps that we had. So it was connected into the people who were actually doing the work on the ground, committees and town staff. And so the, the good work that's happened, as you look at those bar charts, there's a lot of stuff that's happened. And not everything certainly, but a lot of good things have happened as a result of the hard work that the boards and committees and town staff has done. And I think one of the things that we've shortchanged ourselves on is that we haven't communicated that as effectively as we might. So there's a long list of things that I think we can all be proud of that our colleagues have done over the last several years here that have made the town a better place. And for me, that's the message that you take out of this and we will continue to, to push on tracking and encourage people to work together and make progress. But the good news for me is it's working. So I'm delighted to be part of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Anyone else have any comment? Is there anybody else from Master Plan?
No hands raised from the wait, from the Zoom waiting room.
Okay, thank you very much, Debbie. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a proposed accessory dwelling unit bylaw and regulations.
Let me give you a quick update. Here we are. So this public hearing is continued from January 27th and February 10th. We have this Planning Board meeting and then we have a March 10th meeting date. I believe the warrant needs to be signed by the Select Board on or about the 18th of March. So we have two meetings to come to. A document that the Planning Board wants to have published in the warrant with the goal of trying to avoid amendments on the floor, on the town meeting floor. So I think that it's well on its way. As you know, the state put out final regulations at the end of January and Town Council has been making revisions based on his understanding and response to questions that the Planning Board has had. Mimi and I meet with the Zoning Amendment Working Group, which is comprised of the Building Commissioner, Lara Davis, the admin for ZBA, Marguerite Landry, Select Board member, Mimi and I, and Leah Emerson, the former EDC coordinator, and Al Hamilton as well. And based on some of the comments we received from them and reiterating the questions that the Planning Board had as well, there were revisions to that as well. So Mimi and Town Council have developed this ADU bylaw that you have a current copy of right now. And the biggest change from probably the last meeting is that there was the question about how do we handle the unprotected ADUs that we currently have in town code 174-9, which is over 900 square feet, which is by right mandated by state law now, which are called the protected. So the approach has been to, instead of leaving that old 174-9 section in the town code, Town Council provided a second warrant article attached, so to speak, to the first warrant article. The first warrant article is specifically about the protected ADUs, which you have to be very careful how you write that because if there are special permits required, it will trigger a two-thirds vote requirement at town meeting. So the warrant article that reflects the protected ADUs by right, which are the up to 900 square feet, et cetera, are in that first portion. And then in order to not just terminate what accessory dwelling units you can have after that, so if you're over that mandated, it would be unprotected. And in that is the old process of having a special permit to get a permit for an accessory dwelling unit that is not of a protected status. So it's bigger than 900 square feet. So to make a long story short, that was pulled out into a separate warrant article because that will trigger a two-thirds vote requirement at town meeting. And this copy of this draft is in the town pa-, the Planning Board packet for the meeting tonight, which you can find next to the agenda on the town website. And I think the other change, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that special permit would be with the Planning Board for the unprotected ADU, which are the larger units.
Yes.
Okay.
And a couple little, other little changes that Town Council added.
Okay.
To the, to the definition that accessory dwelling units may not be located in a trailer. That was discussed at the last meeting. And then under Section B for ADU in primary dwelling unit must be owned by the same entity, although Town Council wasn't sure whether that would pass muster. That was to answer the condoing question. And then the Board of Health had asked that number five be included. All ADUs shall comply with any health and building codes. Town Council and the zoning group thought that that was unnecessary and redundant because it will require all building and health codes. So it's not really necessary to be in there, but I leave that up to this board to decide what they think on that. And, oh, and the other big thing that the, um, is the zoning group, some, some in them felt that the, um, the abbreviated site plan approval was unnecessary and it could be, just be done through a building permit process. My personal opinion is I think it's helpful to maintain some type of transparency and some type of oversight, the same way that we've always done it. It's a very abbreviated site plan that we do now, but there is an opportunity for neighbors to know what's happening and what it'll look like before the, the hammers start flying. That was my only thought on that. Oh, and then the last thing in the, um, in the special permit part for the non-protected ADU, the last total cumulative number of accessory apartments, that was pulled right out of what we have now, the 5%. Town Council didn't really think that was necessary, nor did the zoning group, nor, I agree with them. We've never kept track of it. And I think we're at, the only person who's ever kept track of it was when Laura came on board. She started looking into it and I think we're at like 1.2% or something. So I don't, I don't think that's necessary to, to limit that. So, Mr. Stein. Ms. Holahan.
Um, so thank you for the back and forth with everybody. I think it's looking really good. It's shaping up very nicely and I really appreciate everybody's efforts moving this forward. So my only couple questions. I saw Jay had put in the definition of accessory dwelling unit, as you stated, that it may not be located in a trailer. So I know we talked about trailers and mobile homes. I don't know if we need a clarifier. And then the other question is if we use the word trailer in mobile homes, do we also have to define those in the, the definition of the ADU? Because it's not in our town code. That's my first question.
Good question.
Number five, so while it may be redundant, I'm thinking that accessory dwelling unit by right, you're not going to always have like someone who understands bylaws and understands the rules of engagement. You might have a DIY, someone at home who's going to build their own accessory unit. So I do think it's not such a bad idea, just to kind of restate it, just one sentence. It doesn't take up a lot of space and it just reinforces what they have to do. So I'm in favor of actually keeping it in. I think that was my more note. Actually, I think that was it.
What's your feeling on site plan?
Oh, site plan, I, oh, thank you. So actually, I have two more notes. So the, the first part on the site plan, I do think we should have a little bit of oversight, just maintain how we always have. So I don't, I don't think it's an egregious burden. I think taking out the request for special permit is. And so now it's a site plan, not, not special permit. For zoning board and moving it to Planning Board is the right thing to do. So I support an abbreviated site plan through the Planning Board. And my, my final comment was around the separation of the article around unprotected ADUs. Makes sense. I just think, again, as we think about preparing for town meeting, one, who's going to prepare this? But two, really to kind of make sure that it's in sync, that, you know, if, if one passes and the other doesn't, what happens? Like, we need to kind of be prepared to share this as a separate article, but it makes sense so we can keep the 50% threshold and then the two-thirds of the other one.
Thank you. Mr. Mario.
I didn't really have any comments. I, I agree with the abbreviated site plan. In terms of, I guess, I guess we'll talk about that another time, how, as we get a little bit closer, right, to the meeting? But I wonder if we want, in terms of presentation, would this be only the Planning Board to town meeting? Or someone from the Select Board, for example?
We can see if we can ask for someone from the Select Board also.
I was just thinking originally it started with Mr. Dennington. There was that little committee that was formed initially, and though that was a long time ago, but I know he has a special interest in, in this topic. And so if the, you know, I, I'm not sure if he wants to get involved with the presentation.
It is, it is being presented to be put on the warrant by the Planning Board. It's sponsored by the Planning Board.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Well, I'm not sure if, you know, how we feel about that. I just know he, he, you know, has, has an interest shown, has shown interest initially before the state law. And it, you know, if it makes sense, then I'd be in favor of that.
Thank you. Ms. Broschel.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said. I, I do think, especially on Marnie's point, that, that we leave in there, number five, be five. I, I agree with her. I mean, is somebody, a novice, going to potentially do something for the first time? If it's, sometimes if it's not spelled out and it's very easy as it being one sentence, it could get confusing to somebody. It just shows them another path to follow. I agree with the abbreviated site plan. And Mimi, I also have no issue with taking off six, the 5% that you mentioned as well. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your thought on abbreviated site plan, Jesse?
No, I'm with the rest of the board. That's fine.
Okay, so we'll leave that in. So is everyone in agreement to take out that 5% in the non-protected? So, um, what's in the non-protective now is proposed, is pulled right from our bylaw that the total cumulative number of accessory apartments specially permitted by the Planning Board or Board of Appeals since January of 1979 shall at no time exceed 5% of the total number of one-family houses in Southborough. Yeah. Everyone in agreement with that? You as well, Marnie? Thumbs up, okay.
Sorry, yes, sorry. Yes, I mean.
All right. And, oh, and I had one other question. There's a, um, a data collection provision in the regulations. I don't know if that belongs in the bylaw, but how do we memorialize that so we know to collect data? Or is that something that the Building Commissioner will be responsible for? It's in the state regs now, yeah. Well, I don't, just to make sure that in town, that we know who's going to be doing that.
It's the first I'm aware of that, so I'd have to think about that. Maybe it's something we can bring up at the next zoning working group meeting with Chris Lund. Currently, Lara, the ZBA admin tallied it only because that number was missing and no one had ever done it. But because some of these are by right, the protected ADUs, they wouldn't come before the Planning Board. Oh, for abbreviated site plan, that's true. All right, we'll have to think on that. We'll have to get feedback from the Building Department.
Yeah, so I think they want to know like building permits issued, denied, there are a bunch of things, so that, okay. Very good, so it looks like we're in pretty good shape. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Paul Carter, Six Hill Site Avenue. I agree with all the comments of the board. I would just want to emphasize the abbreviated site plan review. These are, a lot of these are going to be very controversial to the neighbors. You're going to have to have a process where you can deal with that. So I think that that's very important. The other thing, I, I guess I don't understand why we need to have a cap on the number, percentage of ADUs versus the number of residential. I don't think we want to have a cap.
Yeah, we're taking it out.
You're taking that out.
It's in there now and it was just left in for the, for the non-protected.
Yeah, so I think the, and I think the statement about the septic and the building permit, if anything, I would make them stronger because these are going to be really controlled by septic. Okay, that, you know, I just think of my own lot, everybody's lots, you know, in town. They're going to really be controlled by septic, so I would even make that stronger. And if say something about the building, I think that's useful, too, because some people aren't going to understand that there are going to be building permit requirements and our, our Building Commissioner takes them very seriously.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I got a question on the protected versus the unprotected.
Could you please identify?
John Bottalini Jr., 4 Y's Circle.
Thank you.
So currently, we have a bylaw that allows you by special permit for whatever size you want. It's not regulated by size. And we have to go through.
25%.
Yeah, so it's, it's got a percentage onto it. You're right. So, and I didn't get a copy of this and I'm trying to pull it up out of my phone. So that's an existing. So if someone has one of these and it's existing, that's an unprotected one? So if you have one that, that's under the old by special permit, that's become a, an existing, that's an unprotected one?
Well, the protected, the protected is in the sense that it doesn't require a special permit. It's a by right use. So it has to be either 50% of the primary dwelling or 900, no more than 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And the reason to leave in the special permit is to allow for there to be larger ADUs.
Larger ones, so that, and that's, I, I agree with that. But now he, Jay, I, personally, I thought, after our last meeting, thinking about this, I thought Jay complicated things a little bit more, to be honest with you.
That's his job. He's an attorney.
I know. He knew exactly what he was talking about. And I hear the board tonight saying, you know, let's simplify things so somebody can come in to do this. And I do this for a living and already I'm confused at what's protected and what's unprotected. And now we're going to have another bylaw at town meeting when we already have one on the books.
Well, so the one on the books is going away.
Right.
So he, so originally, we thought maybe we could like leave that and have that be called accessory apartments as it is now and then have these protected ADUs, which is required by state law. And he thought it would be cleaner to have the protected and unprotected and have all the same terms and definitions. and unprotected and have all the same terms and definitions.
So, that's where I think he complicated things, because already, we're, we deal with this all the time. I mean, you guys deal with it, I deal with it. You're going to try and explain this at town meeting, and already it looks complicated.
Well, it's pretty much the same thing that we have now.
Right.
The same bylaw, except for taking out that 5%, no more than 5%.
Taking out the 5%, but there's, there's two we're going to vote on at town meeting.
Right, a by right use, which is the 900 square feet.
Right.
And then what we already have on the books that would be more flexible and allow, allow for larger.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Jay? I mean, we're just talking about, you can do it the, the easy way, under 900 square feet.
Right, you can just.
By right.
By right.
If you don't want to conform to that, you go path two, not by right, or quote-unquote unprotected. It's the same thing.
Unprotected. So, that's why I don't, why are we taking out the one, because I, I remember earlier on, you said, oh, we don't want to touch that because we already have that. Why go to town meeting and do both of them?
I think I might have confused when I explained it at the beginning. So, the way the warrant article, I know you don't have it in front of you.
Do you have a copy of one?
So, the way the warrant articles are set up is that we have the new section that meets the state mandate for the protected.
Right.
900. And then, as a continuation, part H. So, that section goes all the way up to, um, F or G, right? And then, a new warrant article is injected right there to say, okay, here's H, which will be added, so that everything's in the same section for accessory dwelling units. As opposed to, we're going to have this new section with the new protected ADUs, and then 174-9B, which is under special permits, is in a different section. So, I think town council felt that if we had one continuous section, it's just that the second warrant article has to append the first one because of the vote. So, if you look at the document, I don't know if you can call it up, Colleen?
I can share it online if you need me to.
Okay.
But I just need some of the code.
Then you can see there's a continuity there, so that the ADUs all are in technically one section.
So, what happens if the, the by right part passes, second part fails? We just are left with?
Then that's what you have.
That's what, we have 900.
And you can't do ADUs over 900 square feet.
Oh. So, we've gotten rid of the one that's, the special permit one?
That is being moved to this section with a little bit different language. And then that paragraph under special permits in 174-9, where you have all the various special permits, you know, conversion of single families to two families, et cetera. Um, that's just being appended, in a sense, into this new ADU section, so that everything for ADUs is in one section. It goes from A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and then H is for how we do things now.
But it's still in the same one. So, now you've got H.
Yeah, but it'll be one continuous section. Here's your protected ADUs up to 900 square feet by right, and then we're going to still keep anything over that you need a special permit for, but it's all in this one section.
All right, so.
See here, see here? Go down just a little bit, Colleen. No, down, this way. Move this down. Here. Okay, so stop. Now come up a little bit. All right, see, this section right here is the end of the protected ADUs, right? And then, this warrant article was separated because it'll take a two-thirds vote. So, we didn't want, if you inject this piece in one warrant article, it will require a two-thirds vote for the state mandated section as well. Because it require, you can't have, like, a unreasonable requirement for a protected, for an ADU by right, and an unreasonable requirement is a special permit. So, we're just basically taking once the special permit section, out of the special permit section that's different in the code somewhere, and putting it here as an appendage. I think town council felt it was more continuous.
I think it's a lot more confusing myself, to be honest with you.
If you read through it at your leisure.
I will.
You might find it a little clearer.
I will, but it's now. So, I have another couple of things, too. I believe somewhere in our zoning, I don't know exactly where, we have a, a thing for trailers, RVs, and things like that, that you can't occupy them for more than 30 days on a lot or something. So, I think that would prevent you from having somebody come in with a ADU and be a trailer, or somebody wanting to live in an RV. How you police this stuff, I don't know, but if somebody wants to live in an RV in your yard, I guess you've got to catch them at it. And I don't think they're going to even come in and ask for a permit. So, that thing. And the other thing that bothers me a little bit is, um, the ownership, which says they, they have to be, must be owned by the same entity. And I don't understand why that would have to be.
So, that, it was.
We don't have that now.
Correct. Well, but they are. Like, there aren't any ADUs that are condoed.
I don't know, but I don't think, I, I think it's an option. The only reason I'm thinking that is.
So, I don't know how it would, so it, it just complicates things greatly, because it's on a lot with a primary dwelling.
Correct.
And so then, if you condo it off.
Well, I'm not thinking of it for profit, but just say, you know, you got, you're living in it. You know, you've got your failure to launch, son. But I don't live in the other one. You don't live forever. You pass away, and you go, okay, mom and dad left you this, I'm going to keep this, and they're two different ownerships. I don't see a big problem, and I don't know why he wants to have it be under the ownership.
In your scenario, that went through probate, so it is the same entity, in effect, because it went through.
I guess. I don't know if they want to change the deed and say, this is yours and this is mine. I mean, I come from a big family, believe me. We argue over all this stuff all the time. So, I just think that it, it may not be necessary, but.
If I can interject here. So, um, the questions that I had sent to town council that talk about some of these things you had, was for my, my note, I said here, um, you're going to provide revisions, um, as requested attached to the most recent draft. So, I sent him the draft, and I said, for reference, these are the notes from the last meeting. Provide a separate bylaw for unprotected ADUs, or add some changes in new ADU bylaw instead of keeping the old special permit for accessory apartment section, 174-9B. Maybe address in same section of new ADU bylaw, but a separate warrant article to not trigger two-thirds vote requirement, because that's what he had brought up at the last meeting. Um, the other thing was, um, draft, um, owned by same entity for rental purposes, state accessory to primary, to be very clear. So, that was what we discussed at the prior planning board meeting, that, um, the terminology owned by same entity for rental purposes, can't really embellish it more, accessory to primary, to be very clear. So, that was put in there, and I think the reason was because they didn't want to have, like, condo issues, like Mimi was saying. Yeah, one piece of property, one deed, not, you know, two property owners on one lot, right? You would have a condo that's owned by, the ADU would be owned by somebody on somebody else's property, kind of like two-tiered deed, almost, right?
I don't know. I'm just kind of wondering here.
Yeah, so that's why I think we wanted it.
Yeah, because it's on one lot. It can't be sold off, so it would have to be condoed, and it's, which is complicates.
Later on. It can, it's added to your housing stock, and it can be condo minimized.
Right, and it is like, Colleen, it's not accessory to the main dwelling. For the primary. Sorry if that's confusing.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Paul Carter, Six Hill Side Avenue. I think that the purpose of the state law is to increase the options for housing, but I don't think the purpose of the state law is to allow two families by right. They haven't gone that far, um, and I think that's important. So, that's why it has to be in the same ownership of the whole parcel. Otherwise, your zoning, you're making everything two-family, and I don't think that's the intent of the law.
Thank you.
I'm not disagreeing with him. He may be right. I'm just looking at this because you have, in your by, in your bylaws, and I don't have it in front of me, but in your bylaws, you have the right to do special permit for two-family in town, and then you all have the right to do accessory dwelling. They're both special permits.
Except, accessory apartment is what it's called, yeah.
So, that one you're not doing away with. That one's.
The two-family of a home in existence for.
Yes.
Two years, yeah.
So, that stays.
That stays.
Yeah, the one section in the special permit section is 174-9B, is specific to accessory apartments. And that's what will be replaced by adding it to the end of this new, this new section.
I may be confusing the both of them. I'm sorry. I should have asked you for this this morning, and I didn't.
Sorry. And we can go over it.
Yeah, so that's pretty much what the accessory apartment is now, except the term is changed to accessory dwelling unit, to make it consistent. And it doesn't require going to the planning board for a report and then going to the zoning board for a special permit. It's all before the planning board.
What you have now, though, is you go to the, go to the board of health for a letter, and you go to the planning board for a recommendation.
A report, yeah.
Yeah, not in abbreviated site plan, so.
But, but what, what we look at is the same.
You do. You look at the same stuff.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So, just one comment. We may want to look at the, the, um, definition of accessory dwelling unit, because it references specifically Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 1A, which is the protected ADU. So, maybe we want to just, I don't know, somehow fix that so we can have both protected and unprotected ADUs, or have a definition for each.
I, I think it's confusing to start, we're seeing people stumble over. I think it'd be, um, more clear, I guess, if we put in a definition for unprotected and protected. Because it's, it's not intuitive. You know, if you were working with it, you know it, but it's kind of a strange definition.
I don't know how we even got, like, I was just, I've always thought of it as by right or not by right. So, why aren't we just using that? Just protected and unprotected?
It's the state, state regulations of how they refer to.
We can just translate it to by right, not by right. I mean, that's an oversimplification, I guess, but.
We could add a perens.
I was thinking the same thing, Marnie.
Yep.
Do what?
A perens, by right.
Right.
Not by right.
Right, right, right. That's good. That's a good idea.
Yeah, so that's a good idea. So, we can reference the Mass General Law, perens, uh, protected, and then. Or by right, yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll look at that. Anybody else?
But the definition for the unprotected, um, abbreviated, no, the abbreviated site plan is still required for protected, but the definition for the unprotected, you have to be careful where you put it, because would that trigger a two-thirds vote requirement? Like, which, what we're trying to avoid. So, if you're, if you're, if you're clarifying, here's accessory dwelling unit, protected ADU, peren by right, accordance with Chapter 48, Section 1A.
I don't, I don't think the definitions would trigger. I think what triggers is the, uh, special permit.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, all right. Because the other one still requires a special permit, the unprotected.
But as it is here right now, as defined, it's, it's referencing that Mass General Law.
Yes.
Which it is the protected.
You use the same term.
It requires that 900 square feet.
Yeah.
Oh, and this says unprotected ADU, so somewhere we should have a term of what that is.
So, add a definition.
Or somehow clarify these two things.
Okay, clarify. Maybe town council can speak to that.
I'll look at it, and I'll send you a, um.
A draft?
A draft, and then town council can opine.
See if that's okay, okay.
See if my fake lawyering works. Yes, sir.
In order to get this through town meeting, that's absolutely critical, that's clarified, protected and unprotected, because it's very confusing. The other thing is to take a look at the bylaw and just think it, think about all the questions and how all the people are going to be confused at town meeting. So, to, to Mr. Bartolini's comment, has to be as clear as possible. Otherwise, it won't go through.
Okay.
Anything else?
I move that we continue the public hearing for proposed accessory dwelling units, ADU bylaw and regulations to 6:30 PM on March 10th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Demiria, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Demiria, yes.
Brashow, yes.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, proposed zoning amendment for shared parking. I think the only, um, change here after discussion at the last, uh, planning board meeting was to remove the special permit requirement and just put the parameters for what needs to be met in order for shared parking to be, uh, approved through site plan approval. Mr. Stein.
I would agree. No questions.
Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you again. Shared parking looks great. I have no questions or comments.
Ms. Di Maria.
No comments for me. Thank you.
Ms. Brashow.
No comments either.
Anybody in the hall? No? Anybody on Zoom, if you have any questions or comments on shared parking?
Seven attendees, no hands raised.
So, I move to continue the public hearing for proposed zoning amendments for shared parking, 174-9 and 174-12, to 6:30 PM on March 10th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashow, yes.
Is that all right for me to forward that to the, um, town administrator for putting in the warrant, into the draft warrant already? Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing, 2 East Main Street, mixed-use building major site plan approval, 2 East Main Street, mixed-use building special permit downtown district.
Okay, hold on.
And a lot has happened since our last meeting.
Lot, and then not enough.
All right, I'll give you a really quick update. All right, since the last meeting on February 10th, which was the planning board public hearing, number five, which continued the public hearing to this evening, um, an extension request was granted for continuation to tonight with the action deadline to March 14th. So, we won't be needing another extension till the next meeting, if that's needed. On or about February 13th, um, there was an error discovered in the zoning code, how it was transcribed by the third-party, um, company that puts the information into the town code on the website, and it involved the mixed-use development definition. It was missing a piece regarding a 50% maximum residential floor area for, um, It was missing a piece regarding a 50% maximum residential floor area for two-story buildings. In addition, underneath the downtown district dimensional criteria, or the uses that are listed there, the by-right use was written as not to, a mixed-use development would be non-residential, what's allowed, and not to exceed three residential units, and that was incorrect. It was supposed to say not to exceed four. And then also, in same, along the same theme, in C2 of the downtown district, which is uses by special permit, it was supposed to say mixed-use development, if you have non-residential uses as allowed, and with five or more residential units, which would trigger the special permit, not the four units that Peter had originally proposed. Then there were a couple minor typos in there as well, but that was the crux of the issue. So Fosse-O'Neal is currently reviewing Peter's second submission, which was a change to a multifamily project with no mixed use. So we reached out to Town Council and asked them, how does that impact the public hearing process that we noticed that was, you know, advertised originally as a mixed-use project? And he opined that it should be re-noticed to the public. So I think Peter's here tonight to talk...
Because it's a change of use.
Yes, because it's a change of use, from a mixed-use to a residential only.
So, just, do you mind if I ask a question at this point? Amy? No, Karina. So would we be therefore, like, closing this public hearing?
It depends on Mr. Bemis's approach. And he's here tonight to talk about which way he plans to take this, right? So Peter's had to do some thinking about all this and what works for him as well. So I think that one of the goals for tonight was figure out where we all stand on this, where the planning, where Peter's approach is going to be, and is there any relief for him, and, you know, how we move forward based on Town Council's feedback. So here we are, so we haven't received Fosse-O'Neal's comments back at this point, we're still waiting.
Good evening, Mr. Bemis. Sorry for all this confusion. This is very, very disappointing.
Confusion, frustration. So first, I did get the zoning bylaw complete from Town Clerk on Thursday. And then I've been trying to, before then, on Tuesday, started trying to pursue the building inspector, because ultimately, he's going to have some interpretation on some of these things, because there's things that you have control over, and then there'll be things that he has to interpret when we go in for a building permit. So that's been where most of the concern is. And then I've not had the opportunity to speak to building inspector.
So Peter, Karina and I did speak with him last week, and he understood that the way that we were interpreting it was the way it was intended at town meeting, and he, there, it was the, some of the language in there is referenced directly into building code, which threw him off, but I think that he has changed his interpretation.
Okay, but, so that would be the first thing, but then the second part of it is that if you just stop and think about the math, and this is just basic math here, if we have 1,000, just, we'll just use easy numbers to do. So 1,000 square feet in the first floor, 1,000 square feet in the second floor, 50%, that will work into the definition, good with that. Where I believe it falls apart, and it's, the penalty comes in, is when you're trying to do something that's a little bit more creative, and I'll come back to what the issue is, really, is that if we just took 1,000 square feet on three floors now, so now we have to do the point four, okay? You'd end up with 3,000 at 40%. Okay, so you do the math on that, and that would say, okay, then I could have 1,200 square feet. So think about that, you're going to let me put 1,000 square feet on the first floor, then I put 200 square feet on the second floor, or third floor, excuse me. But once I do that, I don't really have 3,000 square feet. The math is the problem. You're penalizing, you're seriously penalizing anything that goes after two stories, and you're mimicking what's below it. Because otherwise, you'd have to bring it in and then go up, and that doesn't make any sense. So what I guess I'm just getting at is that there's a, the bylaw, the way it's drafted, is just wrong. It shouldn't penalize someone, to do a mixed use, you have to actually be taking on more risk, because there's more costs. You have to look at the two uses that are in the building, the sprinkling of the building, the wasted space that's within the building because of the egress points that you're creating, and that's what I don't think anyone understands. So what I've concluded is that it doesn't make a lot of sense to even think about a mixed use, even with the definition being clearer, because it's still a penalty, there's still no way to make it work. So therefore, it's better just to work at a single use. Sure, if I thought I could get an office building in downtown, again, I'd go back to that direction. We had a user for that opportunity, but they're not in existence anymore, so that isn't going to work. Retail, one level, that's all I would get. And that doesn't make a lot of sense, because of the square footage that's there. So, because when we put the apartments on the second floor, the problem is the size. And then there's a depth issue because of the egress points. So when Ron Searls first drew up the plan, which is what I submitted, he's 44 feet wide. To get to 44 feet now isn't even a possibility because of the nine-and-a-half-foot parking space, because of all the other dimensional requirements that we have to meet. And then, as you know, the town put the sidewalk on the property, regardless of whether there's an easement or not an easement. I mean, I do believe the Board of Selectmen voted to not do the taking, so I think it's clear to me that they didn't. So therefore, the town's on the property now, but I'm willing to grant that in fee to the town. I don't, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist with this, but that's going to then force, if I recognize it ahead of time, I would force where my offset is. So that's going to push my front yard set back in and cause more reduction in the building footprint. So I just feel like I'm going, this thing is just going down a very slippery slope that's just getting worse and worse and worse. So what does fit is the six-unit apartment building. It gives us a better footprint, then I can accommodate the sidewalk, no problem, there's setbacks there, there's comfortable spacing for the parking spaces, the size of the units is reasonable. When you go back to the Ron Searls plan, it was only 10 foot wide on the bedroom. And that's a pretty small bedroom for today's standards. I was joking with Paul Carter, because we both lived, raised our families in the split neighborhood over there on Ted and Carolyn, and we were joking about the size of the bedrooms that we had. We started out there with a small...
And you both turned out okay.
Yeah, 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 it's all good, it's all good. What I'm getting at is the fact that, just to do that, though, in what you call a modern apartment, trying to attract people to that and get a reasonable amount of money for rent, it's just not in the cards. So to do the 50% formula that's in the bylaw, which I think folks are trying to say, well, back into that, it's, the footprint is going to be too small to be able to do it effectively, to get the common space with the stairways, and then have the front to back to be able to fit four units in there, and, you know, have their ba, because you're going to think about how you're going to build this. You want the bathrooms and the cores to line up. And then the space that's available after that is really where the bedroom's going to go. And when I keep coming back and looking at it, I'm like, there's just no damn room. So with that said, I will do the re-noticing, so I feel like I could leave the public hearing open. People have been notified, they know this is the project, we know where we're at. So you would, there'd be a newspaper ad, has to run for two consecutive weeks, we can make that for your second meeting in March. And I would send certified mailings out again, and that way everyone knows what the project is. So we would be compliant, and then we could hear the project in its full version on that date. We're still waiting for Fosse-O'Neal's comments, I'm frustrated with that. I did submit them on the 6th, it's now the 24th, I think that's ample time to get those back. They didn't get them back. So we lose a little bit more time. I'll get them back before your next meeting, but where we're going to have a public hearing, I don't think it makes sense to come back again until the public hearing. The only other thing I would ask you as a kindness here is that I went into this, you know, in good faith, thinking I was doing the right thing. I don't want to have to pay those filing fees all over again. I'm in the process, we've done it. You would be entitled to assess me $780 for my major site plan review and $520 for the special permit for the district. And I've paid it once, I don't think it would be right to have to pay it again. And Karina's going to ask me for that money if you don't take action on it tonight. So I would ask if you consider that, that would be the one item I'd like to consider tonight, if you could. And if you can't, then I guess I'll pay it and then ask, maybe you could reimburse it at a later date. But one way or the other, that's something that has to be dealt with.
Just to add, though, Peter, I understand what you're saying, there is another special permit requirement based on what you come in with, with your floor-to-area ratio.
Yeah, I was going to discuss those, but it's still, I don't see it as another, I don't see it as being another fee, though, for another special permit. They're all part of the same special permit category, because there are three.
I haven't experienced that special permit yet in eight years here, so I was looking for guidance.
Right, so...
So right now, you have a major site plan approval.
Right, and then...
And then you have a special permit for the...
There's three.
Multifamily not to exceed 10 requires a special permit.
That's C7.
Yep.
Then there's F5, which is the maximum floor area ratio, because, again, with the footprint that we currently have now, and I've rounded up so we could be conservative, because in case, you know, there's an awning or some other overhang or something that we want to do, I just don't want to be less. It can always be less, it can't be more. So we're at 4.0, excuse me, 0.455. So it's any, at 0.4, we don't need, it's by right, and at 0.5 is the max, so we're kind of in that middle range. And then the third one that I think does need a vote, too, by the Board, is F7, which is the minimum facade build-out. Remember I mentioned to you originally about the fact that we, the way the bylaw is drafted, it's telling you to be a certain percentage of facade, frontage? So we front on two streets. The bylaw doesn't speak of this at all, it doesn't think about someone being on two streets. So we're 73.6 along East Main, and we're 21.1 on Newton, and you're supposed to be, you know, again, about 70% on both streets, it doesn't, it's just silent. So my point, and I already have a cover letter to you, this is, being a corner lot, the Board must waive facade build-out along the secondary roadway. So the primary roadway's East Main, that would be where we comply, because you have to be 70 or more, we comply. The secondary roadway's Newton, and at 21.1, we don't comply technically. But I don't think the by, we would never be able to build that long anyways, because I think it's like 180. So it would be this long, skinny building to get the same square footage. And then you would fail on East Main. You follow me? So one way or the other, you're going to fail on a street. So that's, it's in the special permit provisions, so I'm not saying it's a separate special permit, but I'm saying it's a formal waiver you need to grant for a downtown district. So I see that being the process.
Okay.
So I see the downtown district being a special permit that I need. Underneath that heading, there's two aspects of it. One is the apartments, because there's, no matter what, you have to get a special permit for them, regardless of the number, up to 10, and then the maximum floor area ratio.
Did you request a waiver in your submission?
The first one?
For the, for the minimum facade build-out?
I mentioned it, but I didn't, now that I'm being, well, now that Town Council weighed in on this, I was trying to be really careful with everything in the re-noticing.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't want to do this again. So I figured we'd at least say something in the noticing about the facade build-out.
So that's a waiver request, I don't think that needs to be noticed.
Okay.
Just the special permit, any special permit thing does.
Okay, like I said, I just wanted to be careful in how it gets done, since we're going to take the time to do this again. I didn't ask for it the first time.
You're the OG, you don't need to notice waiver requests.
Correct. Okay.
Is it me now? Okay, so, Karina, can we talk about Mr. Bemis's request for a fee waiver? It seems like, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's, if there is one additional permit application in addition to what he already had in process, is that correct?
There is, but it's kind of strange, because we don't have, like, a specific application for that. We have a special permit for downtown district, and could, if we, we want to be careful, we want to set a precedence, whatever we do here, we would probably do, not that these come up often. So you have your major site plan application and currently has a special permit for downtown district because of the use.
Correct.
And then there's this dimensional floor-to-area ratio requirement for a special permit, which is almost like a, like a accessory to that special permit, you know what I mean? It would, maybe it could be tackled underneath that same special permit, as long as we spell it out in the legal ad that says, this special permit for downtown district also includes the FAR of... Yeah, for the special permit, for the FAR criteria.
And that's how I wrote it on the app, you know, your one-page application?
Yeah.
That's how I wrote it on that, and then in my cover letter, I did the bullets on those.
Yeah, I mean, someday if we add a specific application for special permit for FAR in the downtown district, but it's kind of overkill, because it's going to be in the same public hearing. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's one factor in the project. It's not like the essence of the whole project, it's that this is one dimensional criteria, so to speak.
So I'm not opposed to the fee waiver, and it sounds like, you know, it's not a good situation, and you're doing the best you can with it, so we appreciate your...
I'd love to see the zoning change, but it's not realistic.
Not doing that with this.
No, no, it's not happening, so it just, there's no way to change where we're at. I feel like I've got to get something approved here. So if it doesn't get built in the timeline and somebody changes the bylaw, that's a different story. But I, I got a sense that maybe there'd be a change, but I don't see it happening, at least in this town meeting, as you had said, the warrant's going to close in a couple of weeks. So I don't think, my hopes and my crossing my fingers are going nowhere on that one.
So we would consider this dimensional special permit as a secondary to the main special permit? It's kind of part of that, right, if everybody agrees?
I don't, I mean, your call, but I don't think we need to vote on these things, I think we can, by consensus.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so really what it just comes down to is that the way that a mixed use was going to work, it's three stories, two and a half, is really what I was going to say, but even if you made some accommodation, the accommodation, if you think about it, again, 50% of what's above that first floor, it's still not going to work, because it's always, you're backing into this smaller number. It's not like you have 3,000 square feet of the whole, for the whole thing, each floor, that you can count, because the moment you go above that first story, that first story has to be the bigger piece. It's the stories above it, because of this formula of what you get to feed it on, because it would still be a percentage of the part that's above the first floor. It was the first two floors, different story, now you could take 50% of that and go up, then it would work. But it's once you take the whole thing and you go up 50% of that, it's still not enough, doesn't work. So that's why I say that that part being in the definition is the, is just the killer, there's no way around it.
Well, it would work for two apartments.
Yeah, okay, I was going to say, two, right, but then it's financially not...
Just tight with four units in the size of your lot, with the size of your building.
It's just then not financially feasible, I should have said that. If you take that footprint that we have, it would be about what size the units are that we're proposing.
Right, for your economic analysis, you needed four units.
Because that's basically what our footprint is, is the 3,000-square-foot footprint with two units in it. When you put that on the second floor, that's great, but you only get two. You need to go up another floor to get the other ones, and then it would work. But you can't because of the formula.
Yeah, well, the intention was to encourage commercial development, because if that, if, if there was no formula and you could do anything mixed use, you would get zero commercial and all residential, and that was what was trying to be discouraged. And the reason there's the formula and it doesn't say first-floor commercial and the other, was to allow for apartments to be built on the first floor because they would be more accessible on the first floor?
Yeah, so in a different lot, like, I was trying to think of a scenario where this could work, but where downtown is and the lot, I'm just saying for you, going forward, what you have to work with, what I have to work with a designer, it's not, it's not flexible enough, and it's a penalty. And that's all I would just say, is that you're going to have to change that definition, you won't get anyone trying to do it. going to have to change that definition. You won't get anyone trying to do it.
Well, there was that question whether mixed use really works or not, came up a lot during the years of.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Stein? Ms. Houlihan?
Hello. Hi, Peter. Thanks for coming in tonight. Thanks for your diligence here. Mimi and Karina, thank you for talking to the building commissioner. So first, I support that the dimensional, the FAR dimensional special permit is a subsection of the downtown district special permit. And I'd be supportive of waiving the fees. I think that was the only questions you had for us, too, right?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maria.
Hi, Peter. Thanks for coming in. I don't have any questions tonight.
Are you okay with the waiving fees and the special permit for the floor area ratio as a subsection of the floor, the special permit for the use?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Thanks.
Ms. Brashow?
I'm fine with that as well. And I would just like to add the special thanks to Beth Mello from my Southborough that did a lot of digging to even kind of get us to this point, to have this conversation. I know I had gone back through my paperwork and everything I had, had it exactly as Beth found it. So I was trying to figure out how, you know, and then the blue sheet, it was when I went to the motions that was when I actually saw it. So kudos to Beth for, you know, trying to find a way to make this work, Peter, but.
Yeah, no, I told her that. And I said, you know, journalistic excellence on her part. I don't know if you get an award for that, but she definitely got it right.
Yeah. It was definitely appreciated. And again, Peter, I appreciate the time and the effort you're putting into this as well. Thank you.
You were going to re, you were going to re-notify the abutters with the legal ad?
Yeah, I'll be responsible with those costs. I mean, I know I have to pay you.
For the legal ad and the paper as well?
Yeah, yeah.
And we, and the planning board waives the fees for the two new applications?
That's all I was asking was.
That's what you're asking for?
Application fees, but I would pay for everything else.
All right, I wanted to clear.
I can't expect you to pay.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Also. Yes, sir.
Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. I feel a little responsible for maybe confusing things at the last town meeting by amending things.
Your amendments carried through. That wasn't the problem.
I know, but I'm still, this is, this is so confusing a topic, I'm not sure exactly what's good and what's bad, or what should have been and what shouldn't, and what needs to be fixed. So I do have, the question is, so since you're revising this, this has to go to town meeting? No, it doesn't have to go to town meeting.
No. So what was sent, what was voted on and what was sent to the attorney general's office and approved is correct. It's just when it was transcribed and put on the website, it was incorrect. What happened was, as you'll remember, the, what was motioned was a blue, a blue sheet. Oh, here it is. I went back and found it to figure out what was going on, was the blue, was the blue sheet. So that, so what was written in the warrant was not moved to be voted on. What was, was this blue sheet.
Okay, there was another step in there.
So what happened, and then, then there were amendments.
Which is what I made. I made the amendments on the floor.
On this. So
Okay.
So your amendments carried, but what they did is they put what was in the warrant on the website with your amendments, which was incorrect. It should have been this.
Okay. Well, as long as it's been figured out. I guess what I'd say is that I think this is a good project on this site. You know, it's not what was, what was hoped for in terms of mixed use. But one of the things, in thinking about this, is we might want to think about the fact that we might need a different floor area requirement for a size lot, because thinking about what Peter's been going through and trying to do mixed use on this small lot seems to be part of the problem. So we might want to, not this town meeting or whatever, at some point, perhaps if the lot is less than or equal to 20,000 square feet, have a FAR of .5. If it's less than or equal to 40,000 square feet, FAR of .4. If it's less, greater than 40,000 square feet, an FAR of .3. Something to think about so that we don't have this problem again. But the other thing, you know, I think the facade is going to be good. It's going to fit in with the village district. And I think it's going to be the best we can get. And that's all good, because that lot's been empty for a long time. And if Peter doesn't do that, we don't know how long it's going to be empty after that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions or comments?
So when I read this, I'm going to, am I omitting what's in parentheses here? Because this is going to be renamed?
Well, I think, do we need an extension? So you're going to come back on 3/24, correct?
Right.
Once it's three notice.
I told Karina I can give her that offline, though, because we're covered through the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
And Fuss's comments will come in. And all I was saying to you is that I don't, it may not make sense for me to come in to talk about those when I know we're going to have a, the public hearing would have been re-noticed and we'll just resume on the 20th.
So you want the option to come in on the 10th?
No, no, I don't need that. I have no problem with you continuing, and you can acknowledge that I am going to give you an extension to that date.
Why don't we just do the extension now, then?
Sure. If you've got it with you, I'll sign it before I leave.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me just get one clarification before we move on. So the current applications are in effect.
Right.
Because it's still the same site plan and special permit. It's because the use is changing, that it's just going to be re-advertized and the abutters re-notified. It's not starting the clock from point, time point zero when something, a new application gets filed. It's the current applications. We're just letting the public know that the project has shifted to a change of use.
So can we discuss a new use before it's been notified?
Well, no, it's going to be submitted, it's going to be, the legal ad's going to be.
Yeah, but it's a different use.
It's a change of use. It's a different use. It's a different use. So the hearings are continued, but in order to meet public notification requirement, we have to put it in two consecutive Mondays in the paper and send out abutter notifications with certified return receipts. And so it'll go in the paper next Wednesday, in order to time it so that it will be in effect on March 24th meeting, because it's too late to get it noticed for the 10th.
Yes.
Okay, so don't do the extension now?
So we won't continue to March 10th. We continue to March 24th.
Which will need an extension.
Which will need an extension. So you'll continue tonight's hearings to March 10th, no, to March 24th. And then you can vote on an extension, and we'll get Peter the form tomorrow. And the extension will be to March, it'll continue to March 24 at the same time. And the deadline for the planning board to act will be March 28.
Okay.
Agreed.
That removes your option to have any testimony on the 10th?
Yes, no, I understood that.
And when I read this?
Yes.
If I'm, if I'm extending it and I read what's in the parentheses, is that problematic?
So I wonder if we should.
Because there's a use change being implemented.
Oh, because it says mixed-use building.
Correct. What, can I just omit that and state the public hearings just without the use in the motion? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, it's kind of weird. I know what you're saying, because it's changing and we wrote mixed use, so you.
So I think that's what I'll do.
To East Main, yeah.
If that's, okay. All right. So the motions are to continue the public hearings for 2 East Main Street, major site plan approval and special permit downtown district to 7:10 PM on March 24th.
Second. Oops, sorry.
I messed up. Go ahead. We can do that one.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashow, yes?
And I move to extend the decision deadline for 2 East Main Street, major site plan approval and special permit downtown district to March 28?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashow, yes?
Good?
Thank you, Mr. Bemis. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right.
So.
And so we should just continue 26 Meadow?
Oh, yes, yes. I had given you.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Sorry about all this kerfuffle. This is very frustrating. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows major site plan approval, 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows special permit, low-impact development, and 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows special permit, major residential development, flexible development. And it is my understanding from the proponent that we are continuing this till the next meeting without testimony.
Should I just move now? Or, Karina, you have anything you want to do?
Nope.
Motion is to continue the public hearings for 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows, major site plan approval, special permit, lower-impact development, special permit, major residential development/flexible development to 7:15 PM on March 10.
Do we have anything on, like, at 7:00?
We do, yeah. It's going to be 2:50 turnpike.
Oh, okay. All right.
And you're also, is the modification settled? So we just gave you an application for.
Okay, if that's fine, it's fine. I just want to make sure that we're not here at 6:30 and not have a hearing till 7:50.
Well, we have, still have the public hearings for.
The ADU and
The ADU.
shared parking.
We can always tackle other items.
Okay.
Well, we have, just to recap, the 200 turnpike modification to site plan and lid is at 7:05. We put that in there just to get it started, but you don't have to start it there. We didn't want to leave a big blank if a lot of these continued, so we put it towards the beginning.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
But that's okay. And we don't need an extension for 26 Meadow Lane, because they're extended through March 14, which is past the next meeting.
Okay.
So you're good with just the continuance, right?
So it was moved and seconded by Marty Houlihan.
So I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashow, yes?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item. 361 Turnpike Road, Valvoline Instant Oil Change Minor Site Plan. If you could update us.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes, Ms. Houlihan.
I was going to depart after our public hearings. I'm on vacation, so I wanted to just bow out at this time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Have a great vacation.
Have fun.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. So for 361 Turnpike, the minor site plan for the Valvoline station, we are waiting for Fuss and O'Neill review comments. I heard back from Vito Colonna, who's the engineer representing the Valvoline franchise owner, and he requested that they continue tonight without testimony. They are working on a turning radius and also feedback from Mass DOT on access, accessibility. So that one will be continued and does not require an extension.
This is taking a long time for our peer review comments to come in.
It is, it is, because they are transitioning out, and they agreed to, Fuss and O'Neill agreed to continue all the projects they were working on, so they're still trying to churn them out. We, we have quite a few requests into them as well, so.
Okay.
I would like to just point out one thing, that we were requested on 26 Meadow Lane to ask Fuss and O'Neill to stop the review until, until Peter addresses the open space that he's agreed to do. All right. So Fuss and O'Neill's not, we're not waiting for 26 Meadow Lane?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
But 2 East Main and 361.
361, yeah.
Turnpike, and it's been.
They're due this, this week.
Okay.
Yep. I've been in contact with them, and they, they are also quite busy, so, okay.
Anything on that? So on to the next item.
So that's a discussion, so we don't have to continue that?
No.
Okay.
It's a discussion item, 250 Turnpike Road, 40B status comments to ZBA. I don't think, do we have anything on that?
No, I just wanted to confirm that the letter was submitted to the ZBA, copying Ferris Development and the town administrator as well, with the comments that were still, that the planning board had at a prior meeting. So that was submitted. The next meeting on that, I believe, is
Wednesday.
the 26th. Yep. And so, small update, I think, no, that's another project. Never mind. I was thinking 120. So that was it on the 250. That letter was submitted.
Okay. All right. Which brings us to planners' report.
All right. I'm going to do this fast, too. So the select board is meeting tomorrow night, and on the agenda are the fiscal year 26 budgets. I did confirm, I spoke with the treasurer this morning to see if there were any concerns for planning board's budget, and he said that he didn't feel that was going to be any issues with planning board's budget. It mostly is the larger budgets they would be discussing. They did let us know if there was anything. So I don't anticipate anything on that. 120 Turnpike, the 40B, that's in front of the ZB, that has been approved by the ZBA. There were conditions of that approval, and they recently, last week, submitted a subdivision plan and a plan of land, an easement plan of land, which I provided, I forwarded to the planning board members. That is slated for the 26th this week, continued to. So if you had any comments that you wanted to, if you wanted just to listen to what's going Next we have, we talked about the 40B. I think as far as 32 Coslin, we had that meeting with Atlantic Management Group to talk about the development down on 32 Coslin and the other property they bought. And Kathy Cook was putting together a group to work with Atlantic Management on, you know, IP, district, additional uses and such that might impact.
What specifically that they were looking for?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do what they want to do.
For the uses that they wanted to do, to see how it would fit in. So there was mention that they were going to provide some kind of a text amendment sample to Kathy for people to look at, to see how it would affect the input.
I don't think we ever saw anything.
No, not yet. Not yet.
And I, and I did send out an email to the board if anyone wanted to be in that working group. You're welcome. If not, I'll, I'll be happy to do it.
Thanks, Mimi.
When I heard nothing back, I figured that's where we landed.
Okay. And then the last thing is, we're still waiting for the bill to continue hybrid meetings.
Oh, tick tock.
March 25 is the deadline. But I think the bill is already in the works, and they're anticipating that it'll probably be continued.
I hope so.
Yeah, to make it permanent. We'll see. But there's no official word yet. And then I also sent you all from the Mass Planners Forum, there's an ADU by And then I also sent you all, from the Mass Planners Forum, there's an ADU bylaw webinar on the sample bylaws that they are working on to put out for people, even though it's already mandated. So I didn't know if you were interested in that, if you didn't see that email, just know it's there. It was a webinar. We're already kind of beyond that point, but it might be interesting to see.
One thing I just wanted to mention is that Amy Berry from the town clerk's office is leaving. She's going to become the town clerk in Grafton, and I sent her an email that selfishly, I'm sad to see her go, but it's a great opportunity for her. Going to miss her smiling face in the clerk's office.
Yeah, she, she was a real asset to the, to the Town of Southboro.
Do we know when her last day is?
It's the 28th.
28th, okay, thank you.
I believe they're having a get-together for her on Thursday, this Thursday, on the first floor, somewhere between 9:00 and noon. I'll forward you the flyer that came out, so. And Grafton is also where Kristin Pasquane, who was our payroll person, left a couple years ago, too. So she, she won't be, she'll have somebody there she knows, all right?
Grafton should pay us a finder's fee.
Yeah.
Taking our best.
All right, so I think that's all I. No, that's all I have, and we don't have.
We have no minutes. So only left for one more motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashow, yes.